Spend my staff development day. Teachers are asked to make choices, a lot of times where I wish we didn't have to ask them to make those choices. I think some of the best staff development can happen at the building level when you have smaller groups, when you're talking about individual and real kids. And I hope that our behavior support coaches can spend more time at the building doing that. But staff development time is golden. We've all have to have more than.
Dr. Jones, I think you wanted to add something?
Yeah, just a couple of points before we get too many questions down the road. I do think that the staffing model is something that we have to look at, and I feel like the model we've had is... (applause). And we were just in this discussion, I think yesterday, about the staffing model. And I will say, you know, one of the exercises we've done with our administrative team is really, we've done two different exercises this year. We've looked at what's really working well, where are the challenges. And one of the things overwhelmingly that all of our administrators also put on the table was our staffing model. So I think we're gonna have to come together and go back to the table. The other thing I would say to what you were commenting on, Peter, is yes, training is really important, and that's only one piece, but I think it looks different in elementary, middle, and high, and there are, there is no one solution. It's really a multitude. And I'll give you an example. A Gennett teacher can have all of the training in the world and be highly skilled, but if they're sitting in a high school class with 26 children, and 18 of those children have an IEP, and some of those children are still, they have a writing disability, they can't write, and there's no parent to really assess them or to help them, or they struggle to read, and then you have another student whose skill level is on high school level. They're all in the same room, and it's just we're asking, in some of our situations, it's unrealistic what we're asking. So I think it's a multitude. (applause).
So first, I'm still a little bit baffled, Mary, by your role in KID Ed in all of this because I know that, and that you're presenting this, because I know we don't have our teachers observe their own classes and evaluate themselves. So, because there'd be implicit and explicit bias, so I guess that's more of a comp than anything, but I'm a little baffled that you're the one presenting this. Thank you very much to the brave young woman that got up and spoke about her daughter. You know, I've heard that, that was the most powerful speech I heard tonight of everything that's covered, and I've heard over and over again the story of gaslighting, litigating, fear of retaliation, teachers are afraid. I've heard people say to me, "Teachers are afraid of Mary Ford." They're afraid of retaliation from Mary Ford. I haven't really heard it from Dr. Jones, but I've heard they're afraid of what Mary Ford will do. So I know that there are people that are afraid, administrators, I mean, of administration. We heard, I think, just not that long ago from someone who actually also quit teaching in the Greenwich Public School system because her daughter was in special education and was afraid of retaliation. So this is a story, as you spoke for many people. So thank you for your bravery and your honesty, and unfortunately, it's the truth. Personalized learning, I don't think is the answer. It was described tonight as a digital experiment. That's what it is. So giving students with needs of all kinds of special needs a device is not the answer. So I have to disagree with you on that as well. I agree with what Mr. Scher said, the vast bulk are not being served by paraprofessionals. Our general education teachers do need training, they need mandatory training. And then I do have some questions here as well. A lot of that was just, thank you to her and some comments.
I just want to clarify, though. Personalized learning is not about devices.
Partially it is. Partially it is. I also have a couple of questions. On page 33, I want to see if I read this correctly, on 33 it says that the positive social emotional skills, it says that in Greenwich Public Schools, of the children of preschool, it's the preschool corner, I think, over here, of the preschool, 100%, 100% of our preschool children, percent who substantially increased their rate of growth by the time they turned six years of age or exited the program, positive emotional, social emotional skills, 100%. Do we do, and then we hear of children getting to kindergarten and saying, "I'm a bad child, I make bad choices." Do we, do we do think sheets in preschool? Because I know we did think, I call them shame sheets, but I know we did think sheets for a while. It may have been done away with in the elementary school. Do we still do think sheets? Do you know what think sheets are? Think sheets. Think sheets? I call them shame sheets. I'm just curious if we do those in a preschool program.
No.
We don't. And yet, and yet here we have 100% social emotional. And then we have students get to, 100% social emotional positive skills, and we get to kindergarten, and children are wetting themselves and scaling backwards.
But it's like after, so it's like a month or so.
Right. So it's, so, right, so that, I'm just, I just wanted to point that out. I have another question about data. This one, it said that Old Greenwich School reached 100% growth.
What page was it?
Did you say 33? Did you say 33?
On page, not 33.
Oh, page 22.
22?
Means that 100% of the students at Old Greenwich met...
Yeah, so, Old Greenwich, and, right, oh, page 22, Old Greenwich, percent of students meeting goal 2018 to 2019, 100%. That's in 2018 to 2019. And I remember, because it wasn't that long ago, hearing from, from parents at the podium, that that was actually the school where the administrator was, was giving answers to help pass a test. So that's, I find it odd that the, of the one, the one school that reached 100% growth...
No, that's not 100% growth.
100% meeting goal, sorry, 100% meeting goal, I didn't mean growth. 100% meeting goal was the same school where students were helped on the test. So that's, irony, I'm not sure.
This means that 100% of the students...
Met their goal.
...met 80% of their objectives.
Right.
100% met, they met...
Met their goal.
The goal is that students will meet 80% of their objectives. At Old Greenwich in 1819, 100% of the students met 80% of their objectives.
Right, and I have trouble trusting, and that's significantly higher than every other elementary school. And I am having a little trouble trusting the validity of that number, considering this is the school where the administrator was helping, helping, helping students meet their goal, and here it says 100%. So I'm, I, I've questioned the validity from the get-go, but this is, this number seems strangely devised to me. So I'm having a little trouble with this reconciling that that is the same school where there was an administrator giving answers. And that's all I've got for the moment, but I'm sure I have more questions in a moment. Give other people a chance.
Yes, sir. Actually, Karen Kowalski, did you want to say anything, or are you, or wait?
Karen.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Can you hold down the thing for us?
I have, I have some questions, I have some additional questions that I, I think is best, you know, I want to continue to go through, as Karen had mentioned, all the additional material that had been sent to us. And I think, and I agree with her, and I concur in her position, that this should be added again, as, I don't think the board has had enough time to digest the additional information that's been given to us.
Okay. Any more on the special ed part? Because we have the people from Community Connections with preschool here.
Yeah, I actually, I've got a little bit, Mary. So first, one of our former board members said, "Lead with the positives." So kudos on the Welcome Center, good idea, glad you were able to do it. I know you had asked for funding, we didn't have funding to give you, but glad to see that you were able to solve that problem. That said, this monitoring report repeats the question that was in the last monitoring report submitted two years ago, and it was designed to answer this question. This is what your monitoring report executive summary says. Is Greenwich providing IDEA services to students with disabilities that are compliant with the requirements, effective in meeting the requirements, efficient in the delivery of services, or sufficient quality to meeting the individual needs of each student? You know, I'm really not convinced that's the right question. I wasn't two years ago. I'm, I'm less convinced now that this is the right question. I think based on the data that we've seen, based on the anecdotal, based on what we've heard from, from the teachers, I think the answer to this is no. I think the question is even more basic than that. Are we properly serving the students in the best way possible? And I can't answer that as a yes. I really can't. I appreciate the fact that you've, you've provided some guidance on what you think ought to go into a special education review. I'm hoping Dr. Jones gets out of this feedback from the board as to what that review ought to look like. We've got money in our budget for it. While it's nice to have your input, we're going to be reviewing your department. That's going to be an independent review. But again, I'm gonna come back to it. Compliance, efficacy, efficiency are not the right measures of how we're serving students. Compliance is a minimum standard, but if actually, I live in compliance. It really is, are we meeting the minimum standard? That's not what we want for these kids. You know, I've said it before, this isn't just a legal obligation, it's a moral obligation. Efficacy really doesn't tell the whole story. That word just bothers me in terms of students. Efficacy is something you talk about in terms of drugs, are these drugs effective? This isn't effective for students. Efficiency is very focused on saving money. I've heard you say it before, you know, prior meetings. This board, though, has never given you, in the time I've been on, and I think Peter's same, we've been around a long time, we've never given the direction that this is about saving money. So if there is a need, the expectation is, we're gonna hear, there's a need, we need to ask for money. We shouldn't be hearing that from the parents. It shouldn't be the teacher union saying it. It should be the program coming to us and saying, "Let's do this." So I truly believe the simple question of are we best serving our students is where we need to go. I really hope that this review that we do next year, and this is to Dr. Jones, will really be a soup to nuts review, all the way from identification to providing the services, to how those services are measured, to are the goals the right, you know, the right thing in the plans for the students, who's responsible for monitoring them, all the way through to can we actually exit kids from the program? Are they successful? If 800 of our kids have a disability, are we serving them to the point where we can actually graduate them? Look to our ESL program as a model. Some of those students that are in our program for ESL are also in your program. There's a significant overlap. We've heard that time and again. And yet, those students are able to graduate from ESL, but they're special ed forever. And I don't think that's right. So I really...
Can I just interrupt you, Peter?
No, Mary, I'm gonna keep going, because I'm the chair and I have the gavel on the floor.[737.73][737.73](laughter). You know, I sit and I listen. Training and support. So training by choice, that's great. I love that we offer things. The problem is, when we offer a plethora of options, and I've sat through the Greg Tang math, it's great, but you know what? Am I gonna pick special ed over that? Probably not, because I want to improve the math student, math scores of the kids in my room. We're gonna have to find a way, hopefully working with, with the GEA, to find a way to best support our teachers and making sure they have the training. And to staffing, this one boggles my mind. You're talking about it now, Mary, we built the budget for next year already. It's a little late to be talking about staffing. One of my last pet peeves, and I'll take a break after this, Evolve. This is a program that has bothered me from time immemorial. Every time we ask for it, we get a different explanation. It's for kids, now we make the decision early, but we don't know who the kids are yet. Time for this program to go. If we have a need for paraprofessionals, stop trading them in for teachers. We could use the paraprofessionals. It is time to figure this out.[800.41][800.41](applause). It's been too late. I really have a high hope that we will get a quality review of our program, a understanding of best practices, and a true action plan for implementation. We need to change the culture of how we do this. I think KID Ed's interesting, but it is one tiny little sliver of the entire program, and I really think we need to step back and take a big look, and that's what I'm hopeful Dr. Jones is going to do.
I just have to say, people who are in the ESL program are people who don't speak English as their first language. The expectation is that they can learn a second language, and then they no longer need those services. When you're in special education, you've been identified as a person with a disability. It's not a, it's a lifelong disability, that's what you have. And we're here to try and give you specially designed instruction to learn compensatory skills, to teach you a different way, but there's not an expectation that if you learn something, you are no longer a person with autism. You are still a person with autism.
Mary, I understand that point, but there are students who have learning disabilities that if we gave them the skills that we need and the supports that they need, could actually grow.[884.32][884.32](applause). And I fear that we aren't doing it in a way that's attractive to them. Thus, we lose students to certain specialized schools in the area, and they do come back after a couple of years because they've gotten the skills that they need. Why are we not doing that here?
We have students that we do exit if they no longer meet the criteria. We also have students who go off to special schools and then return to Greenwich as children with disabilities who require special education services.
Okay, all right. Mr. Scher.
I just want to make one other comment about the budget. We are not an island. We are part of the Greenwich Public Schools. And when the Greenwich Public Schools get a budget allocation, we work as part of a team to come in with the budget that you ask us to come in with. Everybody in, every department in the Greenwich Public Schools makes decisions so that we can hit the budget guideline that we are given. And sometimes we have to make choices, and I'm sorry that you, that we have to make choices.
Mr. Scher.
Um, Mary, I'm like a broken record on special education, and I, I, this is for, this is for Tony, too. Okay, this, this, look, we, by any measure we have, contrary to the, look, the GAs here, what's their job? Their job is to get more staff. I fully expect the union president to stand up there and talk about getting more staff. That's what she's supposed to do. That's why her members come and clap. I get it, okay? That's exactly what she's supposed to do. Get more jobs for her local. She's gonna come up there and stand up there every single time we let her, and that's exactly what she's gonna tell us. It's not, it's, it's not new, okay? But, and we like to talk about 2% and what have you, right? Okay? Which is, if you know anything about our budgets and costing, which most of the public doesn't, okay? They don't actually understand what's going on. By any measure, we are the most richly funded district in Connecticut. There's a hun, how many are there? 134, 140 districts? We're number one, far and away number one, in what we spend. What your organization spends as a percentage of the budget, Dr. Jones, who is also responsible for this, is a huge percentage of our budget. We have to be willing, and it's got to start with the administrators, because the board, the board shouldn't do it. Our job is to set policy. Our job is to represent the public. We hire a CEO and staff to manage based upon what we communicate. We take in what you tell us about what's possible and not. Big message, and I just get tired of sending it. I, every, every single year, this, I've been on this board 10 years, okay? I can remember having this exact conversation with, who's the, I even forget, rotating the door of superintendents, the one that was with us for 30 seconds and then disappeared to Utah, okay? I said in that very meeting in Hamilton Avenue, "Please, stop sending me a report that's about compliance. Could we start getting a report that's about how we can improve together? Board working with the administrations, special education services, so that the outcomes are closer to what kids need and what parents want?" And I just, I feel like I'm having the same conversation over again. Mary, I'm begging, I'm begging. Hold on, hold on, stop.
What do you want to tell you?
What I want you to do is take in what you're hearing from the public, take what you're hearing from the board, be willing to sit down with teachers, and you know what? I recognize that people, I've talked to special education people in Connecticut, they all, it's a little community, they all think you're fantastic, okay? I, I can't reconcile what I hear from parents day in and day out, and what I hear from teachers day in and day out, and what I hear from the echo chamber that is special education in Connecticut, the experts. It frustrates me to no end. But here's the thing I'm asking. Tear up the model you have, okay? Go start over and say, "Here's the good stuff that's working, here's the stuff that's not working. The board will have your full permit, will give full permission and support." But for us to keep coming to a meeting where the same meeting is PARAs and Evolve and teacher training, and we provide a catalog, and we're serving most of these kids, and the compliance, as Megan just said, is 100% in, in, in Old Greenwich, I mean, it's just, it's a very, very frustrating thing. And Tony, Mary can't do this alone. This has to be done, she's right, it has to be done with the people that report to Anne, it has to be done with, I'm sure there's some curricular element to this thing. It has to, this is a team sport, but I will tell you, I, if someone were to ask me, what are the two or three, two, you only have two most important things in Greenwich Public Schools right now? This one is, if it ain't my number one, it's definitely my number two. It just, we, I want you to do it, because if you don't do it, then we're gonna have to bring in people from the outside who don't understand Greenwich, don't understand the context, and they're gonna come in and do it. I'd rather it's done internally with the staff, based upon what everybody knows about Greenwich. But this model, and I tried to show it to you in a simple way, 800 kids, and we're worried about putting every kid in a neighborhood school. You go talk to parents. I said this the other time, I'm gonna say it one more time, and then I'm gonna shut up, because I'm done with my rant, okay? There are 50 families who write a check and send their kids outside of Greenwich just to get their kids to deal with reading and coding disability. They don't come to us, they don't try to sue us for the money. They said, "You know what? I'll just go write the check myself, because I'm more interested in the kid." We should be ashamed of that, that someone felt like they had to get up and leave Greenwich Public Schools because we couldn't serve their kid. We just happen to live in a place where there are enough people with enough money, they can go do something else. But that doesn't mean it's right. And we need to, we need to figure something else out so they don't do that. Because I believe what you said. You looked, you said it the other day, when we were in the meeting, it was a little more powerful things you said. We have to look at it as a failure if someone bails out of public Greenwich Public Schools. That has to be our, that's, that's the way we think about the world. And, so our criteria has to be, there's no reason for anybody to bail out.
Missed out.
Okay, and an attempt to summarize, because I feel like we're all circling around the same issue. It's, for once, and I remember I'm the finance person on the board, it's, it's not about the budget, because, Peter, as you pointed out, and I asked Sean right before this meeting, we spend nearly 22% of our budget, so let's think about that, nearly a quarter of our budget on 11% of our population. So it is, it is not about money. We have to do something differently with the money that we have. Because obviously, we can't, throwing money at it is not the answer, it's probably changing the model. And it seems that Tony, you seem to have some ideas, so I'm excited about that, and one of the reasons we hired you, because you seem to really know what you're doing in special education. It seems like you've started that process, it seems like this is the beginning, KID Ed was the beginning, but we have to obviously do a huge independent audit, which thankfully we're getting the financing for, hopefully from the BET. So I just want to, you know, I just want to say that this is the beginning, there's a lot more to come, and it seems like the eight of us are actually all circling around the same concerns.
Just also, just so you know, that percentage is specialized PPS. So that includes guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, who serve all kids, not just kids with disabilities.
Absolutely, but it's, it's, you know, for once, I don't think, we're hearing about the budget being the issue, I actually don't think that's the issue, because there's certainly plenty of money going in this direction. I think that we have, we have to change our allocations.
You have to persuade the involved and show that this is the case. Ms. Hirsch.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'll table the countless questions on detail and process and training that I have, and just say this, it is very clear that we need systemic change. It is very clear that this is not necessarily about funding. We have, our mandate here is to make the best decisions that we've had for the 9,000-plus students in this district. And a lot of the services that we offer are used by students who have 504s and IEPs and specialized learning, as well as students who do not, who have not necessarily even been identified yet, or students who are just, are struggling enough in class and getting by and don't have 504s or IEPs. We still need to make sure that all of this, every bit of training that we give to every single teacher in our district, will help support every student and every educator. It is clear that we need to make change, and I really do hope that when we get this back on the agenda again, and I hope it is soon, once we digest the information gotten in our questions, that we can have a deep discussion on that.
Ms. Wilson.
Mary, I'm not even sure why you still have a job, but just put that out there. The question is, no, I really, I, no, because the question, we're asking questions like, we're in, like, are we in compliance? And I mean, I speak frankly, like, we're not in compliance. And I am still, I'm still stuck on the question a minute ago where you compared ESL to a disability. And if someone has ADHD or executive, if someone has ADHD, you could teach them executive functioning skills, and they don't always, and it doesn't mean that they have to necessarily always continue to have services, for instance. Or if somebody has, and this was mentioned a while ago, you can give them educational tools and therapy to then circle back into our schools. And people are writing checks, and they're going elsewhere, and something, something needs to be done. I mean, I, I don't have a problem saying, 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 saying it like it is, I just, this is a really big issue. Like, we hear people come out and pour their guts out, and, and we're failing to meet the needs of a lot of our students. And, and you're at the helm of it, and so I'm, I'm at a loss. But I, I'm looking forward to getting more questions answered, and I am grateful that we're going in the direction of having a more serious audit, so that we can, and I am hopeful that the BET is gonna help fund this, because it's not about money, it's about our students, and it's about kids, and how they, their learning, their emotional needs, how they feel about themselves, it's all connected, folks. So I'm gung ho, let's, let's, let's dig deeper, because there's a lot to discover.
Ms. Kowalski, I don't know if you've had anything you wanted to add.
Karen? Yeah, I, I do. Look, Mary, you have, I think, the toughest job in Greenwich, because you are trying to work with the children who have, you know, the most struggles. And we need, as boards, to come together and figure out how to fix this, and we should not be looking at, you know, the, the fact of what successes we have. I think we need to be looking at all the children that we're just servicing, and we just, the system is broken. The system needs to be fixed. We are, we are doing a complete disadvantage to a whole host of children. And while we look at, you know, our district debt average is, you know, those meeting are 83%, well, 17% are not. What are we doing for them? That is where we're failing, and we need to look at those numbers, and we need to understand how we can better address those issues. We need to revamp this program, we need to break it down from the very beginning and build it back up again. And we should not be touting any part of this as a success, because until we have 100% of our children meeting those goals, we are not succeeding, we're failing.
I think there's probably additional questions, it's, we'll digest the materials that were provided today. If people have additional questions, I would suggest sending them to the superintendent, and then there's a request to add this back to the, back on the agenda for a later date. We'll do that. Any other comments?
I just wanna, I'm gonna make an editorial comment, and I'll probably get in trouble for this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I would really appreciate if you would temper some of your words about failing, because we have a couple hundred teachers and paraprofessionals out there every day who are working very, very hard for kids. And to have people keep saying, "It's broken, it's failing, it's awful," is really, I think, hard for them to hear over and over again, because they are the ones working with kids who really do think they're succeeding, and they really do think they're doing right by kids. So I just ask you to think about your language a little bit, because what you say does impact them.
Hold on, Karen.
Wait a second.
Go ahead, Mary. Okay, Ms. Hirsch, and then we'll come to you, Ms. Wilson.
I, I just wanted to say that I don't think when we're saying something, the system is necessarily broken, and we're speaking at, in the negative towards our educators. We're hearing from our educators who feel, in some ways, that they're not getting the support, and they feel in some ways that is the case as well. I think I personally said I'm speaking in support of making sure that our educators are getting exactly what we need, and I've said it before, we have a lot of special education teachers in this district who are doing an amazing, amazing, amazing job, and we hear it day in and day out. There are a lot of kids that are served very well by our program, but until 100% of our students in our district, whether they have, receiving services or not, are being, are moving forward, we're not, we're not doing our job properly. So it's not, so we're saying, we're failing in the fact that not every single student is getting what they need, so, or not every educator is getting what they need either to support their students. So, or not every educator is getting what they need either to support their students. So I wanna just make it clear to our educators, we're not suggesting that, that that's a, that's a concern, and that they're failing in any way, and that hurts.
Ms. Kowalski.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think, I wanna reiterate Karen's comments, and that's what I was going to say, our, our educators are doing a fabulous job within the resources they have, and they are advancing a lot of children to the level that they need to get. But we, as a board, and we, as a community, cannot be satisfied until that number increases. And we, as a board and as a community, need to put forth the resources that need to be there in order to make sure that the children that are not getting those services, and that are not succeeding, and not meeting their full potential, are. Because that's where we are failing as a community. Our teachers are working hard, there's no doubt about it. I have, I've been in the schools, I've seen those teachers work, they're not getting the resources, and we need to be providing them to them in order to succeed. Because until those a hundred percent of our children are succeeding, then we are, we are failing, we're failing as a community, and we're failing as a board. And we need to provide those resources to those that are providing services to our children.
Peter, do you wanna add something?
No, I'm good. That's kind of an explanation.
All right, with that, again, submit your questions to the superintendent.
By the way, Peter, is this something, so we don't lose mojo on this, when we get around to agenda planning?
Oh, it's already, I'm on it.
Maybe we should see if we can do it soon?
Yeah, well, I know we're, we're getting-
I know we're kinda jammed up, but it would be great if we could do it soon.
We're getting the key to ed report in March, so maybe following that would make some logical sense. And I've got that noted. All right, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, I've gotta go back and find my agenda because it's so long. Strategic plan update, so I don't know, Peter, if you wanna take the lead on that?
Do you have to do preschool and community connections?
Oh, you, oh, sorry, Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wow, okay.
Do we have, what did we need?
Preschool? Yeah, I said my piece on preschool.
We have the preschool report, you have Amy and Carlene, you're here to, come on up if they have any questions. Our preschool program is highly successful, very desirable. We have every year way more applicants in the lottery for people who wanna be in the preschool classes than we have spots. The difficulty with preschool is every year, as we've explained, we have to admit kids when they turn three. So throughout the year, we're adding children throughout the year, which makes it a little hard to manage in terms of who we're getting, but we do keep adding classes every year. And it's, we try not to do that mid-year. So this year, we're hoping to be able to make it to the end of the year with our fourteen. We've got a couple of classes that are going to six students with disabilities. The preschool has met all of the state benchmarks for their developmental milestones. And if you have any questions about the preschool, Amy is here to answer them.
Anybody have any questions about preschool? We, we appreciate your being here, I think, given everything else that's going on. I love the preschool program.
Thank you.
We wish we had more preschool program.
So do I.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, you stay in the room.
Yes, we appreciate your being here.
The other program is community connections, it serves our students whose IEPs call for them to attend school after their class graduates. Almost all of these students walk through graduation with the class that they've gone to school with, and then enter the program from eighteen to twenty-one. It's primarily a community-based program, the kids are on job sites, they do some work at some of the local universities, and they do attend classes and receive related services, but that's a small part of the day. Carlene is the person who oversees the program.
Mary, I just have a quick question about that. Where's, how's this year, where's it going next year?
This year, it's currently at St. Catherine's, where it has been for the past several years. Next year, it's going to be at Bank.
And I know that the students take the bus and the, like, the public transportation, is there good public transportation for the students?
Uh, yes, we have been looking into that to ensure, I'm actually pretty excited about being on that part of town, because it gives us access to a whole new group of vendors that we can work with, and community that we can work with. We are already investigating some of the local shops around. We're always looking for more and more job sites, because we really wanna meet the students' interests. So this is gonna give us a whole plethora of, of new opportunities, we're pretty excited about it, and we like the location.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Chair.
Can I back up to preschool? By the, by the way, for those of you on the board, it was like, what the heck was that kid talking about? Go, turn to page thirty-two. I don't understand these, a number of children. I don't understand this certified staff. What is this top category on this page? Page thirty-two? No, I know, it's, but it says certified staff. Are these the children of certified staff?
Yes, from the lottery.
Are they, are they town residents or non-town?
This makes no sense to me.
Actually, I would have to go through the seven of them.
See, for those of you who thought I was crazy before, just so you know, the preschool program has always had two components to it. It had a townwide program, and it had a special program available for residents of Hamilton Avenue. Okay? What happens when you're a resident of Hamilton Avenue, the preschool there is, if you live in that area, you get to go to that, you get in that, in like it's your own private lottery just for your neighborhood. Okay? I don't know how that happened, but it's been in place a super long time.
It was part of the neighborhood.
The rest of it, the rest of it was available to all residents equitably across the town. So you might've gotten placed at Old Greenwich, or you might've got a place at North Street, or you might've got a place, but you had a free shot from the other rest of the town for preschool. What happened is, we took preschool out of Parkway and built classrooms at Hamilton Avenue. Okay? And I'm sorry, at New Lebanon, moved them down to New Lebanon.
We added classes also.
Right, I understand that. But when we did that, right, when we did that, there was no discussion in the board of saying, oh, we're gonna create another, another Hamilton Avenue, where there were special rules for people at New Lebanon.
That came out of the magnet programming for New Lebanon, it didn't come out of preschool. So they planned New Lebanon School.
Right, right.
I was not part of that planning. However, when they planned New Lebanon School-
Yes.
-they discussed having preschool at New Lebanon School-
Right.
...as a part of their magnet.
And Bill Mcursie, then superintendent, came before this board and said, we're gonna build these classes because it's closer, it will put this closer to the people who need it, who apply in our lottery. But he never said, I'm gonna create special preference rules for people in that neighborhood, and I'm gonna block out and reduce the number of classes for the townwide program. Now, by the way, you, Mary knows that, you may not have been here when that happened. So that's why it was such a surprise that when this got implemented, there were special rules created for New Lebanon neighborhood students. The board never took that up and never approved it. If you can find a document where that was approved as a matter of, of policy, or in one of the lottery reviews, I will eat my hat. And I'm not eating one, but I'll bring one and I'll eat it.
Yeah, we, the New Leb classes were also full-day classes, which we were not aware of until we saw that.
It was part of the program.
Mary, we discussed this at our last meeting, please just go back and review your notes. If the board wants to take this up and create special rules and block out the rest of the town, the board can do that, but the board hasn't done that, so you guys shouldn't be implementing that.
All right, is there anything else on the board?
Any other questions?
Can we go to strategy?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so, next up? Next up is the strategic plan update. I guess Mr. Chair will turn to you.
Yeah, quick update, by the way, Michael, thank you very much for publishing this from last night. I wasn't planning on using any documents. Just a couple of updates from the last time we talked. Remember, we talked about surveying the public? We've had a chance to review the survey instruments that were used in the prior plan, there was a survey done by the consultant, it was called PSG, they were from Boston, they surveyed the, um, public. We've talked to some people, parents, who are parent volunteers who specialize in the, in the survey, in surveying in real life. And what they've said to us is, if we don't necessarily wanna spend any money on this, we can take this survey instrument, and they may help us tweak it a little bit, but it's properly constructed by people who put together surveys and send that out. So, when we get the strategy committee together, which I hope to do shortly, we'll try to make a recommendation and a decision about that. But if we wanna survey the public to get public attitude on certain issues relating to feed information to the strategic plan, the way to do that with saving money would be taking prior survey and just sending it out again. There will be limitations to that, but it's something to consider, and it's a cost-saving move. We also looked at, by the way, there were some interesting questions in the racial balance survey that was done by an organization called the Metis Group for us. By the way, if you haven't ever read the racial balance community survey, it's worth reading, it'll help educate you. So we're gonna, I'm gonna propose that we proceed down that path before we look at hiring another outside firm there. The, the second thing I wanted to tell you is that our meeting that's coming up on March five, in that meeting, we'll be looking at vision and mission. I'm gonna send everybody homework to do, but one of the pieces of homework you can do on your own is if you go look at E zero zero zero, which is our policy, it's called mission, vision, goals, and something else, that'll be the back, that'll be what we'll be reviewing and deciding whether we wanna keep that as it is or make a change. I can tell you, talking with, I did have a chance to talk with Irene Perici today about work they, they've been doing in the curriculum committee at redoing-
Vision of the graduate.
Vision of the graduate, she's not here right now. Very helpful and interesting what they're doing. It totally fits with what we're doing, it's not in collision with it, it's very complimentary. But it's very important for them to build on their work, which is trying to execute vision and mission down in the classroom, that we're really clear, if we're gonna make any adjustments, we should make those adjustments now so that they can continue their work. The last part I would tell you is, we don't yet have a facilitator. For the meeting on the fifth, we might be able to get through it without facilitator, I'd rather not do that. So we're have to solve that issue. But we cannot go through the April two meeting without a facilitator. I've reached out into my business contacts and strategy community to see if somebody will do some pro bono work for us. I'm not, I'm coming up a little dry, the economy's very good, so people are very busy right now. But I had talked to our communications head briefly at our last meeting about potentially sending out a call for volunteers through Parent Link. I have not followed up with her on that, but I'm looking to do that tomorrow or on Monday. That's our one exposure to keep to this schedule. And then the other thing I'm doing is when Karen gets back from San Francisco, and I have a chance to talk in more detail to Ms. Hirsch, the strategy committee will try to meet with Dr. Jones and, and flesh out some more details so we keep the process running. That's my update. Any questions?
Yes, thank, thank you for the update, Peter. I'm not really-
Here.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Karen.
So, sure, so, here's two things, I was gonna say, I circulated some dates on when I can meet next week. And then also, would you mind circulating the racial balance report that you were funded for reading?
Sure.
I know I read it years ago, but if you could recirculate that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, our board assistant, Mike Antonaccio, was kind enough to dig it all up in the archives. Our former head of communications apparently kept a remarkable archives, which was amazing, and we could find everything. Mike Antonaccio sent it out to me, I'll just forward it all onto the board. It, it'll put you to sleep, but it's, it's good reading. I'm sorry.
No, it's good, thank you.
Peter, go ahead.
That's all right. So, I guess when you do schedule the committee meeting, just let the entire board know, because I think, I think it's helpful to your work. I, I've gotta say, on first reflection, I'm not thrilled with the idea of just getting a volunteer facilitator. I'd like the idea of bringing in somebody that actually knows schools a little bit, or at least knows how to facilitate a strategic plan, so I guess, be, be careful what you get for free.
No, I'm, here's our challenge, Peter, it's a great point. I, I would much rather have somebody, but, you know, with our budget situation, I don't have solved that problem. What, what, how do we feel about that? I mean-
Like lottery?
I mean, my sense from the last meeting, maybe I just read it wrong, was even though this is one of the most important things we'll do, and I, it bothers me a lot, we're trying to do this on the cheap, but at the same time, I'm, I am comforted a little bit, like we have a plan to start from. Right? But I'm, I'm with you, I'd rather have a facilitator. But, you know, we'd have to make some swizzles and choices to be able to do that. What do people think about that?
Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I know I said when we discussed it, discussed this at our last board meeting or at the retreat, that I know when we first met, and we haven't met since then, and talked about a timeline, I was worried about it being rushed. This is kind of the guiding principle of the work that the district is going to do to support our students, and I feel like we really need to do it right. So if we need to change the timeline a little bit so that we do it properly instead of rushing it, I think that that's kind of the key. We have an opportunity to discuss it, if we meet even before March fifth, but, you know, I didn't, and you mentioned talking about people, people doing surveys and things like that, and reaching out, but I hadn't heard about that. I mean, I know we talked about the idea of it, I didn't know that you had started to possibly reach out.
You and I, we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah, I just didn't know, we did, I just didn't know you had started reaching out, because I was, that's all, because we haven't met since then.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was just saying, if you have a task-
Well, in terms of the, in terms of this, I mean, we could make this decision, we could make the decision that says, we're not gonna get any money till July one, so this becomes a next-year exercise. You, you could make that decision. Right? I, I, you know, I don't know that, I mean, that, that would be a decision to make. Right? Because, because what we would have to do is, you know, if we, if we want to actually fund this, right, do it properly, bring in an outside firm, the earliest that could possibly, well, you can't even do it July one, because you've already got the money all encumbered in July one. So it's a tight budget already. So, I mean, we could talk about that, but that's a kick the can down the road, and I, I'm, I'm not adverse to that, we just have to walk into this with our eyes wide
Ms. Damm.
Let me just ask, the last time the board did this strategic plan, was there an outside facilitator?
Well, when hap, here's what happened. There was an outside facilitator, they ran the surveys, which we can use their survey instrument again, run it, they actually prepared the survey instrument. They brought it back, they were facilitator in the process, and to be fair to them, we actually, after two meetings, two or three meetings, we just dropped them and kicked them out of the process. And what wound up happening is, the strategy committee that was under the leadership at that time of Barbara O'Neill, it wound up being that committee that wound up doing the work and pushing it through on the board, with all, well, I don't wanna say that, but we, we dropped them because they were not very effective.
But what I'm saying is, you're saying that we can take as a starting point what they did, and that is something to build upon, and we as a board can look at it, and then make a decision about whether we need a facilitator. I don't think we need to make that decision now with having done very little in the process.
Yes, what I'm saying is, is that the board, eventually the board needs to have discussions, the, the board needs to do the content, the consultant doesn't do the content. The board needs to have facilitated content that says, what is your vision and mission? Right? What do you, what is important? They will never do that work. Okay? We have to do that work. The question is, is if we're gonna put eight of us in a room to try to wrestle that to the ground to answer that question, do we need somebody like a, you know, psychiatrist to help us do that? Okay? Then the next step is, when you say, hey, I need to decide what success looks like, and I have strategic goals, right, that's the next one, do we need outside help to help us do that? The last time that we did this, the strategic goal help came from Bill Atia, everybody, some of you may have remembered Bill. In the end, we had to get, push him out the door too, and then it wound up getting solved by the committee- by the committee with our then-chief innovation officer. So in both cases, we couldn't get there. But I think that was more a failure on who we selected as a consultant than a facilitator than anything else.
Ms. Hirsch.
I just know the last time, when you guys first started, you guys had a year-long process of the strategic planning committee for the development of all of this, and then it was almost, I don't know, it was nine months at least to plan it after that. That's the only reason why I was saying, I don't wanna feel like we rushed this. I wanna make sure that we are all comfortable with what we wanna do before we present it publicly and make sure that we provide enough time for public input.
Karen, I'm all good. The other reason it's that long is because we had never had one in Greenwich ever before, right? By the way, and that's actually a failure. If it takes a board two years to do a strategic plan, I think we have bigger problems. But as I said, if you wanna push this out, Karen, I'm okay, propose it. If you wanna, if you wanna say, let's not start till July till we can spend money and let's take the year to do it, I'm okay with that.
No, I don't wanna push it out to July. I'm just saying, I wanna be, I wanna, we need to start the work now, but if it is not ready by June, I wanna make sure that the rest of the board is okay with that. I wanna make sure that we provide enough opportunity for transparency, for input from all the different, you know, we were talking about the different areas of input that we wanted to have. So we just need to be on the same page before we...
So you or Peter or Kathleen, you know, propose something different. I'm good, let's do it.
Well, I think the starting point though, Peter, is get your committee together, put your heads together, come up with some options, talk about best path forward. When we get together on March 5, that's a place for the full board to have that discussion. Hopefully you come in with some ideas that are a little bit vague, we can fully pick them at that time. I worry about the timeline. I've said that every time we've talked about this for the past three months. But I'm okay if it goes beyond June.
I'm okay too.
I think we're on the same page. We need to start this work. This is a process. I don't think it should take two years. I agree with you, it really shouldn't, but we've got to start somewhere. So I think March 5 is the next point for the full board. Hopefully your committee can get together before then and, you know, leave that discussion. All right, Ms. Joe.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that we're getting along so well, Peter, that I don't think we need a facilitator right now. So let's just, maybe Joe can do it. Let's get together on March 5 and let's see how we do, and then if we have to extend the timeline, fine then, but I think it's better maybe to take that conversation until March 5. If you guys can get together as a committee, like you said, Peter, beforehand, that's great. Otherwise, let's, the eight of us sort of get in the room on March 5 and see what happens.
All right. If there's nothing else on that, we will move on to our action items. The first one being the Central Middle School field options, action items. So Mr. Kelly, did you wanna make the motion?
Oh, sure. I would love to make a motion. After much discussion, much review, and much anticipation by those who have stayed here very late, the suggestion I would like to make as we adopt option number, leave the envelope?
Four.
Four. Four is our motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Joe?
Yep.
Discussion? Mr. Kelly.
Well, yeah, sure. I spoke, having been a coach, as you guys know, for many, many years in town, for me as a coach, it's important to get the kids out on the field. What's something that the, that was not mentioned at all in some of the pre-discussions earlier was that the health of the kids, the ability for them to get out on the field and run around, it's very important. And in this climate that we're in right now, I've coached sports that play on practice and play on grass. I've coached sports that they practice and play on turf. In grass, we definitely don't get out as much as we do on turf. We find ourselves struggling to get out. We get canceled due to rain. When it is turf, we get out just about every time, and the kids get a full workout. One of the programs that I ran, the rugby program, was really good because we didn't just take the top athletes, we took kids who were not athletes. We brought them out there, and every day they were part of the whole structure, the system. And these kids otherwise would be playing Grand Theft Auto or some sort of video game or something like that, which stopped them from getting out there and running around. And they would take the opportunity, when you do have a cancellation due to rain, to maybe lose interest in the program. So because we need to get the kids out and exercising, and the community is, has mixed views, the community wants grass, well, you know what? Option four has a lot of grass. We have also the opportunity with the turf on option four to give the school the chance to get out there and play on the field just after rain or even in rain. So the option, the option four gives us both those options, and I think that's the best one. The board, in my discussions, are mixed. Some want grass, some want turf. The community's mixed. I think in this case, we pleased everybody by going with an option that satisfies all the needs.
Ms. Joe.
I thought long and hard about this, and honestly, the community comments today were really wonderful. I did truly listen to all of them, and it's a passionate issue. And I mean, I go at it from a mom at Central with two more kids coming up at Central. I also have been a coach at Joe's level, but softball. And we live in the Northeast, and that's the other reality, is that otherwise, you know, I've been on Central's fields coaching softball, and I've had my son, where was the gym teacher who came out tonight? She was great, because my son has played football on those tennis courts. And it's just not a long-term solution, and I say that with also, like, here we are sitting at Western. I mean, I wanna solve all of these issues if we could, but what are they saying about a good compromise? Neither party is completely satisfied?
Both happy.
Both happy. Neither satisfied? I'm not sure. But the, to me, we have to make a decision, and I think that this will hopefully, everyone gets a little something here. So I'm also with option four.
Mr. Sher.
I don't know what option four is. Obviously, you, some of you have been cooking this up for, no, no, I understand, cooking up this for, well, it appeared today.
No, Peter, this has been posted. This superintendent sent it to us last week. It's been posted.
Okay.
And we asked for this.
Okay, I guess if the rest of you have sorted it all out, the option four, what is the fill?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at this sheet, it actually says the EnviroFill, which I think is the base of what they consider. That's what's in the packet.
Where does it stand that?
It's on page 14 towards the bottom. I think it's the last line. It's the last line on page 14 of the PDF. I don't know what the actual page number is. It's like the second to last page before you get to the map at the end.
Hey, Peter, why don't we, why don't we ask Kevin Fusiliere to step up? He's from Loner McBroom.
Great.
He's the one who is here to explain option four, if need be.
Yep. Come on down. There's a little switch on the mic, you just flip it up.
We didn't realize you were still here.
Can you hear me? All right, thank you for having me up here. Kevin Fusiliere, landscape architect and project manager with my Loner McBroom. Yep, so option four was what came about after our last presentation. We had presented the first three options, which was an all-grass concept, an all-synthetic concept, and then a hybrid, a half-synthetic, half-turf, a half-grass, but that eliminated the baseball diamond, which was not acceptable. Went back to the drawing board and produced option four. The one I have here just looks more like the original renderings in the area or the background. Option four really pushed this synthetic portion as far as we could to the west, and incorporates enough size to accommodate a softball diamond. So it would have a backstop, it had a full regulation softball field, but then it also accommodates a full natural grass baseball field with a slightly truncated right field. So left-handed hitters are gonna enjoy this park. But it also gave a large area, about 120,000 square feet of natural grass. Now, that natural grass, as we've discussed, is gonna be an engineered natural grass system with under drainage amendments to the soil because we know drainage is a major problem here. But by lifting the whole site with both synthetic and the natural grass, we will improve it, and as everyone said, a compromise with surface materials. The infill that we're carrying for the budget is the EnviroFill. That's the coated sand product that's used at Cardinal Stadium. It's not a final decision on the infill, but as far as we are concerned, chrome rubber is not being considered for this. So EnviroFill is a good product. It does sometimes come with an antimicrobial, microbial surfacing, but we know a Cardinal Stadium that was not desired, so that would not be specified as well.
So my question was, what would this be if it were an organic fill product?
Well, someone had mentioned Hartford's policy. If you look, they say that organic infill is allowed in Hartford fields, and they do specify EnviroFill. Now, I'll be the first to admit, I've never seen green sand, so I don't know how they came about that.
No, I was on the coconut, the organic.
Yeah, the coconut's an interesting one. We've used it in two facilities that we've designed, Massey High School in Monroe and then Hampden High School for their second field. It comes with a lot, it comes with added maintenance. It requires irrigation. If it doesn't stay at a certain moisture content, it breaks down very rapidly, and has to be replenished with an added cost. And also because it is meant to always be moist, especially in fall and spring, you have freezing issues, so the fields can become very slick. It's a nice product for the right application. It's widely used in Europe on synthetic fields that are primarily used for soccer. But again, you have to just plan on a lot of added maintenance and then irrigating synthetic turf. Yeah, see, I've been on the board long enough that I was, I think there were only two, I don't know if Peter was even on the board when we did Cardinal Stadium. You know, these debates are like the same debates. I realize for a lot of people it's new. For me, it's Groundhog Day. It's like Lackable. It's the same conversation over and over again. I'm amazed in the six years, six or seven years it's been, it hasn't really changed. This ball field, just educate me. I know there's elementary-sized ball fields, then there must be what? Can you tell me the different types? You have the 60-foot diamonds, and that's gonna be in line with the softball-sized field, and then you have 90-foot diamonds, so that's from base to base. So that is a regular... Yeah, I'm talking about youth baseball versus... Right, this would be an appropriate size for middle school and up. This is, you'd be playing on a full-size field. Is that what's there, is that what's there now? That is correct. So this is the one that's in the outfield, not the one that's next to the... Correct. Okay. Okay. I don't have any questions or comments, but go ahead. Any other questions?
I guess I just wanna ask about the system underneath both of them. So there'll be drainage, is it the same drainage system for both?
More or less. The components are a little different, but basically, say you build it up, you get the, out of the synthetic turf, we get the topsoil out of there. We shape the subgrade, we put drainage around the perimeter, and then flat drains on the subgrade. So the subgrade's pitched like you would build a golf green with the hair and bone drains. Then there's a pretty substantial free-draining stone layer. Then there would be a shock pad, because we're talking about an infill other than rubber, so we need something resilient and cushiony. Then you would have the fiber in the infill. Under the grass field, you pull the topsoil aside, you shape the subgrade, you would put, you could do the flat drains or you could just do perforated pipe, and you would tie that into an outlet, you'd put a free-draining layer. In this case, it wouldn't be a clean, broken stone like under the turf, because you want something that let the topsoil migrate through it. So it would be a different speck of free-draining material, then your topsoil layer, then sod, preferably to get on, so your students can get on it.
Ms. Downey. Because it's, this is slightly more expensive than the other combination field, could you just kind of give us a breakdown on those costs?
It's just bigger. We had a lot of wasted space under the other one. That wasn't gonna be improved or, you know, really brought up to the same level. That's it. I'm sorry, I have two other questions.
Okay.
The last time we talked about putting in conduit, did you include that in the bid? Yeah, we have a $20,000 line item in there. The idea was to put, bring, be able to bring conduit from the school at a central location to the basically 50-yard lines on the turf field, so there'd be vaults in the ground for electrical. And then at least one electrical connection point at each backstop. Okay. My other question is, is let's say we lay this thing down and then we need to rip it up and move it someplace else. Can you do that, or do you have to throw it away? Well, the interesting thing with the one infill product we're currently talking about... No, I was sorry about the carpet itself. Yes and no. It's very difficult, but the infill is, has a 14-year warranty, which is unusual for turf infill, so it's meant to be reclaimed at the... Yeah, you talked about this last time. Yeah, at the end of the turf. So the problem is to reclaim it, you have to cut the turf into manageable strips, shake out the infill into bags. Those strips are very difficult to reassemble, so it is not likely that you would use the same carpet again. Now... You'd have to throw it away. Throw it away. I mean, send it for recycling or whatever. Whatever. But you can't reuse it. So once we lay it down, I can't reuse it. It's very difficult. It's just the pieces are too big to manage. The pad underneath, absolutely. That will be reclaimed, reused. The stone will be clean. It can be reclaimed, reused. Potentially the piping as well. There's no reason that it should be compromised from installation. So really, we're just talking about the carpet component, which, out of all the system components we mentioned, it's probably the cheapest. It's the infill and the pad that get expensive. Well, the difference between these two projects is two and a half, two and a half versus one and change, right? Yeah. No, it's, yeah, but whatever. Option four is 2.2 million. I'm sorry, grass is a million dollars, right? Grass is a million one. And this thing is two, two, three, so it's a million three difference, right?
Grass.
Right, if I do grass, I mean, it's really, it's, we're talking about one versus four, right? Nobody's talking about two or three anymore? Fair? Right? We're talking about number one versus number four. I mean, Joe's proposed number four as the magic answer. And no, you know, okay, that's what we're talking about? Yeah? True. Okay, so we're targeting one versus two, three, correct? And if we changed it to, what does it do to change the price? Forget the maintenance part. If we changed it to organic fill, does it increase or lower the cost or it's the same? The, if we're just talking about the cost, it goes, it's less. EnviroFill is a fairly expensive infill. How much does it save us? Get ballpark. Maybe a dollar a square foot on the turf field, which is, so $85,000.
You said there's gonna be irrigation, right?
But then we'd have to add irrigation. And then he said not maintenance. Right.
What does the irrigation run, just to be able to do this?
The way they see it done is a big water reel. Yeah, that's right. So it's about, I think they start around $8,000. We do need an upgraded irrigation system.
Does that require somebody to actually come and do the watering as opposed to, right?
There's a maintenance component to it. It's not a simple answer, but, you know, so some upgrading, having a strong enough water supply, and then the... That's for the grass. Yeah, I mean, he could, you could put irrigation, I mean, there's, that's a solvable problem, but that's not, it's de minimis.
Every dollar is not exactly de minimis when we're talking about this.
When, hey, when you talk about doing grass and then we talk about another 1.3 million bucks, you know, in the schema things, when someone talks to me about $8,000, I mean, let's be, let's get genuine, right? Eight thousand bucks, or 10,000 bucks, or 20,000 bucks on 2.3 million is less than a percent. So let's not, let's not add a bunch of hyperbole to this thing.
But on a per-hour basis, it's actually cheaper.
What's that?
On a per-hour basis, it's cheaper.
Yep. But they're still gonna have to come out and mow the grass. I mean, let's not kid ourselves with this. All these crazy arguments, we like kid ourselves about what it really is in terms of money.
Okay, Ms. Joe.
I just wanna know, did we want, since Mr. Gillis stayed this late, do we wanna hear from him?
Do you wanna come up and add anything?
Anything else? Do you like how I have to call Mr. Gillis?
Thank you for the opportunity. It's been a great, and as you say, first of all, you know, we're so appreciative of we're so appreciative of the fact that you're taking on this issue right now, because the kids at Central Middle School, the kids in this town really do need a place to play. And I've experienced this as a coach myself, as a principal, and as a father of a seventh-grade daughter who plays field hockey at Central Middle School. So, you know, from our perspective, really ultimately, you heard from my teachers, and I'm here to advocate for what the kids and the teachers need. And they need usable space, and the usable space that will take up the amount of time that we are on it. And knowing the needs of the school come first, my conversations that I've had with people always articulate the fact that our usage gets us to a point where there are some concerns with the grass being able to be maintained and upheld, how much we use it between our PE classes and our extracurricular activities. So that is a concern of mine, that down the road, we will run into the same issue where we're challenged to have the appropriate field space. And knowing that the fields in this town are very, very valuable to all of our kids, the newest field is going to be in high demand. We also know we live in the reality of the fact that our kids tend to more now, today than before, play organized sports that are scheduled through teams on fields. They don't just necessarily go out and play anymore. And those organized sports need rentals and insurance and fields. And so I see this, as much as I love the fact that conversation is about Central Middle School, and that's our primary focus. I know that it's a work, a community field, too. My building, I apologize, I don't have the data, but it was rented, I think, the most out of any other building because we are centrally located. So logic and reason would say our fields would be used, too, which we're happy to host with the appropriate surface to withstand all of that. So in looking at all of the options out there, I'm in a unique position of having a divided community within my building, but really looking at the needs of my staff and my students. And so a compromised option where we have, I'm one who always enjoys options and choices, and I think it gives us flexibility, I think is wonderful to hear.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I have another question. What is in our, what's in our budget now? Someone told me that...
Okay, so I can help you with that, Peter.
Did the select one cut our budget?
Yes, the select one cut our budget to the $1 million mark. In our discussions at the BET budget hearing, we let them know that our board had not taken up this item yet, that we would be taking it up tonight. We've sent this document over to them. Once we do vote tonight, we will send that back to the BET Budget Committee. Basically, the response from the BET Budget Committee is we want to know what your board wants to do.
So how does...
Tonight, we'll communicate that to the BET.
I understand, but how does that thing get reconciled?
The BET is...
So the BET will make that decision?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. Can I just say where I am on this issue?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, do you guys have any?
Yep. Thank you. John?
Thank you.
Unsurprisingly, I don't mind being the person on the outside, which I can sense I'm already going to be. But, you know, I look at this issue not as grass versus turf. I don't think that's the important issue. And maybe it's because I've been on the board long enough. For those of you who are around during start time, we tried to get a turf field for the school system at Central. But the administration then turned around and said, "We don't need it, we don't want it." Okay? For those of us who are on the Start Time Committee, that was, we were trying to help the board director solve their problem. So for me, I look at this issue maybe a little bit differently than others. I mean, our role is to administer schools and school properties. Our job is not for this board to solve everything for the town. And our role is also to be good fiscal stewards of taxpayer money. And let's call CMS what it is. The issue is not grass versus turf. The issue is, for as long as I've lived in this town, and I have kids now, I have one who's actually out of college now, there's been a swamp behind CMS for decades. Okay, that field sank a long time ago. The issue is drainage. That's the issue, so let's stay focused on the issue. I think this idea of whether it's turf versus grass is actually a red herring issue. And we're letting it become the thing that drives everything we're doing here. Our bigger problem also is, no offense, folks, the BET a number of, well, 15 years ago or longer, forced us into giving the maintenance of our properties, okay, to the Department of Public Works and Parks and Rec. And the issue we're not dealing with in the room is we're talking about spending an extra $1.3 million, okay? Think about that, $1.3 million. A greenskeeper is going to be, or a maintenance person is going to be fully burdened in the town five days a week, 80 grand or 100 grand or whatever it is. That's 13 years of a full-time body doing nothing but maintaining grass. So what are we talking about? We're talking about, because they stink at the job that they're supposed to be doing. It's all weeds and grass and fertilizer, and they won't maintain it and what have you. We're talking about, let's just go spend an extra $1.3 million of the taxpayer's money. Here's the other thing that bothers me about this whole subject. For those of you who are new to the board, you might not have been around when we did our facilities master plan. The superintendent actually thinks that it calls for CMS in 2030. She referenced it in a document. Well, actually, that's completely wrong, because that document that she's referencing has never been approved by the board. It turns out that our master plan, we were told, top priority, fix ADA compliance, which is why we're focused on schools, add capacity at Greenwich High School, which we now are not going to do, because the bubble has moved through. And the other one is, the worst building you have in the entire district is Central Middle School and needs to be replaced. So as a board, our number four priority in our priority list, which was approved by the board, is CMS. Somehow in that document that Tony's referring to, it's somehow number nine. So there's a big disconnect here. So we're about to make a decision to spend $2.3 million bucks on building something that if we actually followed our master plan and the priorities we set, we're going to be ripping up sooner than we can think. That's not, for me, a very good use of taxpayer money. As I say, I think we have to fix the swamp that's behind Central Middle School. It's crime, it's gone on as long as it has. It bothers me a lot, burning up an extra $1.3 million. The real issue we have in town here, and here's the other thing we should be solving. We now know, and by the way, they're absolutely right, it is a freaking crime that this school that we're sitting at has gone four years with no fields. Finally, we got at our last meeting what that's going to cost to do it, and we should do it. I can tell you where I already am. I don't want to dig up eight feet of dirt and put down grass. It's still going to cost us, I think, $14 million to go fix this thing in the back. And we're going to turf that. The other thing that needs to happen, which Parks and Rec, I don't want to be solving their problem. The other thing they need to do is they need to go turf all the fields that are sitting over at Eastern Civic Center when they redo Eastern Civic Center. So I'm just worried, I'm not going to lay down in the tracks over this, over grass versus turf, option four. I just think we're so focused on the field and the people who are banging away, sending us things over turf versus grass, we're not thinking holistically about the whole picture. And I think we're making a decision in a vacuum. And it's a lot of taxpayer money to burn, particularly if we're going to wind up ripping it up sooner than we think we are. And I just heard the answer. When you put that stuff down, if you rip it up two years later, you're throwing it away. That's a lot of money to throw away. Can't reuse it on creating the fields that I will need to create when and how we rebuild CMS. And candidly, this idea that we're going to wait until 2030 to rebuild CMS, that is, I'm amazed that you guys or the CMS parents are even laying down and taking that. That's just, I can't even imagine that, given the shape of that building. It's far and away, we've been told, it's the worst building we have in the district. It should be replaced, it shouldn't be renovated. And we've been told that, so we can stick our head in the sand about that. I don't think we should be doing that. But somehow this got on the agenda before these other decisions are made. I mean, as I say, I'm not going to lay down in the tracks over it, but I think, you know, it's a lot of taxpayer money to be burning on this thing. And the real problem is in Parks and Rec, it's not with the board event.
Yes, Dr. Jones?
Yeah, I mean, I do just want to comment. I do believe that staff and Park and Rec do have a good relationship and we work well together. And we literally met on this last week. And one of the big concerns, and I know our director had to leave, but in going with all grass is that even with a keeper full-time, if we're going to go over 25 hours, which just the school alone will do, so we're going to invest a million dollars and then be telling the community, "Oh, by the way, you can't use it." And the reality is, keeping people off of it is probably going to be a challenge. So it's going to, you're going to have a million dollars you've invested that's probably going to look like a mess by the end of the year. And we actually, as we're even calculating the practice time and PE time, we're slightly above 25 hours, which, you know, we realize that. So I think that's one thing. And I, again, I just want to reiterate, it's not about somebody not being able to keep it up. It's just the hours that could be on the field. Now, the other thing I will say is that I do, you know, look at the master plan. That's how we plan for the budget and for those priorities. And they're laid out, you know, on that grid as far as the years. Central is in that master plan for 2030.
Tony, that document has never been approved for the board, so if you're using it, if you're using it, you shouldn't be using it.
All I can say is that I, well, I guess, maybe that's a discussion for the board later on, but I do know that from a majority of the board, the feeling is that the board voted on the priorities and then that document was put together. And that's, as we're planning for the budget, we would be looking at that in 2030. And right now, with option four, it is still grass up against the building, which is what KGND showed, which I think was what some people were referencing. So whether it's the grass we have now that really doesn't drain at all, or the new grass, whether that's five years, 10 years, 15 years, it's still grass. And that is an adjustment that was made from the last meeting, where it had the turf closest to the building, which would have made that decision point much more difficult.
I guess a couple of things. One, the start time issue, Peter, about Central was, the football team didn't want to use Central because it was grass. They actually wanted turf, we did not have a turf option at the time. The master plan absolutely was about prioritization. We basically were given a bunch of options. We voted on the prioritization. We talked about the factors that we would use to prioritize, and that was the direction we went in. If you look at where we are today against that original timeframe, we had anticipated doing some work, getting started on Old Greenwich and Riverside. We requested that money last year, BET took it out of the budget. We requested it again this year, we'll see if we get it for Old Greenwich. So if you want the board to vote at some point to absolutely settle on this as your plan and locking us in to request that money every year, year in, year out, you have every right to add it to the agenda. I won't vote for it, because I don't think it makes any sense to lock us into that priorities change. You know, for me, Central was about the useful life of the building. You know, we know what the timeframe is on replacing the building. I can't see going out any further. If there's a reason to move it forward, that's a discussion we can have at the right time. But at this point...
Peter, Peter, we...
I've got the floor, Peter. When I'm done, I'm going to recognize other members, we will get back to you. I will tell you why I support option four. You know, it does give us the most flexibility in terms of the field use. There's drainage for both. We want to see if actually drainage on a grass field is going to work. If we commit to it and at the end of the year, it didn't work, we're right back where we were. Basically, we've got a field of mud. I worry about, we spent a lot of time last year about Parks and Rec's ability to actually do the work that was sent to them. It's 20 years. It actually is 20 years ago. We, as the superintendent last year, Mr. Mayo, spent a lot of time trying to work through with Parks and Rec, changing their service levels. And basically, we got stonewalled at the very end of the year because they knew the clock was running out. It went nowhere. Out of the 22 positions that were sent over to Parks and Rec, two were left on their table of organization at this point. They basically used it as their cut every year, the positions that serve the fields. The fields that are best, that the schools have that are maintained by Parks and Rec, are the ones they rent out. Go look at Julian Curtis, it's a prime example. There's two baseball diamonds there. There's the one for the students, and there's the one they use for renting out. The renting out one is pristine. The one for the students has the grass, has the weed infill. You'll see it, it's there. I really believe that this is the best option on the table at this point. It gives us the ability to see how both function. It gives us the ability to have a full-size baseball field. Baseball, I'll be played on grass. I always say in baseball stadiums, I had turf, I think it's crazy. This will give us an opportunity to do it. When I look at, when we tear the building down, this still leaves the flexibility of moving the building. The KG&amp;G drawing that people have been sending around, it's a concept. It's not actually a plan. It's not, nothing is final. And what I learned from serving on the New Love Committee is you start with some, you start with an idea and you end up somewhere completely different. When we started the New Love project, we thought that building was going to be on the field. It's in a place nobody thought it would be. So I'm not locking us in, I don't think this locks us into anything. I just think it's the best compromise that's available. It allows for community use. I do not want to put a gate up around a school and tell the community, "I'm sorry, you can't step on this field," because it's resting right now. I don't think that makes any sense. Karen?
Sure. So, look, I, option four certainly seems like a compromise, but I think we're just selling a couple of issues very short in the sense that, one, the whole concept here is, yeah, it's been a mud pit and a slump, but we haven't even given it an opportunity to see if it, on the drainage component, that may solve all things. And I think we're comparing apples to oranges, because there's no other grass than Greenwich that has these drainage components that we're trying, that we would implement here for putting that in. Second of all, I think, you know, we are going to eventually build, build on a new school. And I do think it is a concept of a waste of taxpayer dollars. And that whole idea of putting around a fence, if you look at the high school fields or any of the other fields that have turf in our town, they also have fences, because you're not allowed to go in and around them, and you're not allowed to bring food, and you're not allowed to bring your dog. So the fact is that, you know, you're putting a fence on, just all of the fields in town have fences. And I also think that we're doing a disservice by ourselves by taking, you know, under, you know, block, Holy Grail, that for some reason, the 20 to 25, you know, the 20 to 25 hours on the field is the maximum, because the only people saying that are the people that are putting forward this proposal. Because if you just do a simple Google search or another, read other studies that have done this, that is not the number of hours that they are putting forward with respect to the fields that can be used. Furthermore, the field is ginormous. The field can be used in a multitude of ways, and certain practices don't have to occur. It's 25 hours across the whole thing. It's enormous. So I think that we're also looking at ourselves as a disservice that somehow we're going to be spending 25 hours on a small portion of it, and the rest of it can't be, then that renders the entire property shut down. This is not true. We need to look at this, we need to look at this field from a holistic point of view. And, look, I understand and appreciate all of these, the health concerns, and there are two schools of thought on that, right? And, you know, we could talk all day until the end of that comes true. But at the end of the day, you're talking about 11, 12, 13-year-old kids on playing on grass fields. And there's no doubt about, without any study, that in fact, it's just healthier on growing kids to play on natural grass. It is less obstructive to their joints, to their growing bodies, to their joints, putting aside, breathing in toxic air, which I can't say one way or the other. But natural grass is the way to go here with respect to just young kids. We're not talking about, and from a competitive advantage point of view, look, I understand that argument as well. But kids that are playing on a competitive advantage, they're doing other things, and their parents are making those decisions for them to do that. We're talking about our middle school kids that are playing, having PE and playing kickball and soccer and lacrosse and everything else that's going on up there. That's what we need to be focused on. And I think we're just missing the boat on it otherwise. It should be natural grass, that's the way it should be. And I have my position.
Karen, anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead, after Christine.
To me, I, you know, the primary, our role is for the schools. And the school is telling us that they need a playable field. And for me, that's kind of the driving force in the decision to support this option. Now, I don't think we should turf the whole thing, but I think we have to have an element of the field that the PE department has the assurance can be used on a regular basis. And I think it's nice to be able to also have a grass portion as an option and to preserve a full-size baseball field. But I do think, taking it back to what our job is, is our job is about the schools, not about all the other organizations. And the school personnel have repeatedly said to us, we need a playable outside area. And I think we should bear that in mind in making a decision.
Time to add to that, I...
Karen, hang on, we gotta get your mic. Hold on. Sorry. Karen, go ahead.
Christine, I completely agree with you. We need to give them a playable field. And that's exactly what I think we can give them with respect to grass. Because again, to the point, nobody put drainage under that field. And if you provide the adequate drainage for that field, they're going to be able to play on it after it rains, because it will have drained. And no one's saying that they're going out in the rain, because I can't tell you how many times they're not, they're not sending kids out to go have PE when it's raining outside. It's the fact that it's after the rain. And all of this, with respect to the studies that have been done, and the drainage system that's going to be put in, you can play on it after it rains. And unless, you know, the school is telling us that they're going to send kids out for PE in the rain, then that's a different issue. But I'm not hearing them say that. I think that giving them the proper drainage on a grass field gives them the playable field that they need.
Ms. Wilson.
Okay, thanks. And I appreciate, I know what it's like to be on the phone, so I appreciate that Mr. Bernstein leaves time for the personal telephone. No, I'm where a lot of you are, and I'm where kind of what Ms. Downey just said makes a lot of sense. I think that, you know, it's for the schools, we listen to the school administration, we need to be realistic in terms of the feasibility of where we live in the Northeast to be able to use the fields. I also, and I think it made a lot of sense that we moved where the grass was versus the turf, and that we expanded to a full-size baseball field of grass. So I mean, so I think that, you know, I think that we voiced a lot of concerns along the way, and we, hopefully, I mean, it's always a process, right? But we've hopefully sidetracked some of those pitfalls by thinking about this strategically. And I know we've all spent a lot of time reading through this and sort of opining over this decision, because, you know, we want what's best for the health and wellness for our children, meaning playing outside and getting in their exercise and getting in movement, and that, that may require some turf. Having the option of natural grass, you know, an entire baseball field full size for, you know, kids to be able to be out and enjoy the grass and play and, I think we, a lot of us here are both sides, and a lot of us here be, are able to understand both sides. And for that reason, I think this is the best of the options.
Ms. Hirsch.
I don't know, I've been struggling with this for quite some time, and have gone back and forth, and my original thought was, you know, we need more usable playing fields, you know, we need more turf fields. We only had one in town that was consistently booked. Having listened to all of the speakers in, you know, the past couple of months, also thinking, and hearing some of the discussions, I was moved to say, no, I think we need all natural grass. Now, and having heard from our school staff and PE, and knowing that we have a curriculum that requires athletics for, and it's part of our, you know, graduation requirements, students need to be out and physically moving. I don't know, in my house, we called it the wiggle fidgets with the ya-yas, they got to get them out during the school day. I've been going back and forth. We have a requirement and responsibility to give our students what they need to meet the demands of our curriculum and to be physically active. And we also have requirements to be good neighbors. And like Mr. Bernstein said, I think, unfortunately, I think, you know, the best option is 50/50, I guess, option four. We have the opportunity to not lock out the neighbors, be able to use the field. Students have the option and will consistently be able to use natural grass playing fields there. They don't have to be on the turf unless it's, I mean, I have a child at Western who's not had an option to have any sort of field for three years, and the one that was here prior to that only had a year and a change on the fields here. So I struggle with this discussion to begin with. I think every child needs to have an option of playing fields. And I think, I've watched my daughter slide through the mud pits at Central a week after it had rained. I watched girls in field hockey falling into holes on that field that were, you know, a week old from mud. I mean, I have the photos of them doing mudslides. I should say sliding through the mud, not mudslides, because, you know, but totally different thing. At this hour of the night, a mudslide sounds good. I've really struggled with this, and I feel it's our responsibility, like I said, to support our students in what they need, support our staff in what they need for, to give our students the best curriculum options, but also allow our neighbors to know that we're doing this in good faith. If we put in, you know, if in 10 years, we need to replace the school, which we do, 10 years down the road, this carpet will be in the process of being removed anyway, probably. So it's not really, it's not really a concern for me, because we will still have that option to make, to make changes to the layout. But I've been struggling with this for a really long time, and listening to pros and cons on both sides, so.
Mr. Sherrod.
Look, I'm gonna, as I say, I mean, I can, I already know how this vote's going to go, and I'm not going to lay down in the tracks. I also know, look, there's five board members here whose kids either were at Central, are going to be at Central, or what have you. So I realize for at least five of you, this is a personal, you have a personal connection to this issue. And look, I know what it is, I, my kids went to school in the Eastern Zone, so if some other board member starts talking to me about, about Eastern Middle School, I will tell you, Christine and I are going to have a very different view on that than someone who doesn't. It's like me opining on Western. My kids don't go here. So I understand for some of you, this has got an extra closer dimension to it. For me, it's a lot more clinical, and, you know, I'm not willing to lay down in the tracks on this. I don't think this is, as I said, the greatest use of taxpayer money. And as I say, I mean, I'm amazed, some of the people who've been texting me saying, oh, come out of the woodwork, by the way, never been here before, but now all of a sudden, they're up on turf. They're texting me like crazy, vote for turf, you really got to support turf, and it's like, I'm getting bombarded. These are the same people who, when we were in the middle of start time and what have you, or in other issues, they're the same people who will then tell me, what's the big deal about you guys over at that Board of Ed? I went to, fill in the blank on the school, I played outside on grass and turf, it was all great and what have you. I think we got to be careful we don't overthink this stuff. As I say, I mean, I won't vote no, I won't vote yes, I'll just let you guys do the thing. The one thing we do have to do, though, is we have got to stop misrepresenting to the public about our master plan. We said it, CMS is number four. You go look at the project schedule that Tony's referencing, it's project number nine. Okay? Those two things can't be reconciled. So, yes, if we want to make it project number nine, we need to take that item up from the Board, and we need to vote for it, and all eight people here need to put their money where their mouth is. To keep representing plans to the public, letting the public believe it's in alignment with our master plan, when it isn't, we, I don't want to keep lying to the public. We got to stop doing it, because it makes us lose credibility when we go to the BET. So, Peter, if you want to make it project number nine and override what the Board took up, I hope you as the Chair will put that on the agenda and bring the issue to the Board.
I'm going to say the same thing I said earlier. If you want it on the agenda, ask for it during agenda planning. You have every opportunity to do so, and have that discussion.
We need to stop lying to the public.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of option four?
Karen? All those opposed? Karen, which way are you?
And Mr. Sherrod abstaining, so it passes by a vote of 611. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to move on to our next action item, which is the GHG's new course proposals for yoga mindfulness and stress management, which I feel like I need, and Honors Advanced topic, computer science. Is there a motion to accept the course proposals? Is there a motion to accept the course proposals? Ms. Hirsch?
I'll make the motion to accept the course proposals as presented.
Ms. Downey is the second. Is there any discussion on the course proposals? Ms. Dow.
Okay, I was going to ask one question, Tony. We talked about how we had to put a freeze on our financials here at whatever, in the year, February in the year, and we're talking about adding two new courses, I recognize, to the budget next year, but is this something that's concerning you, given? Are we worried about adding this, basically?
No, because it's existing staff, we're not adding staff to do it. So that means in order to add a course, you're not teaching something else.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the new course proposals for yoga mindfulness and stress management and Honors Advanced topic, computer science?
Only if I can take the stress management course.
Peter, are you, Karen, are you, are you going to yes on that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes 8-0. All right, next up, policy governance. And Ms. Dow is up here to make some motions here.
I'd like to make a motion. Do I have to read the policies? No, right? Thank you. To approve the policies as presented.
On the...
On the, wait, on the cover sheet.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Hirsch, discussion?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, Karen, I'm going to bring up your point.
Kathleen's just going to introduce it.
So, I get, I received, first of all, policies 11, these three policies right here, don't make me say them. Four policies have been revised, and I managed to, thank you, Michael, to redline them, so you'll see what they are. 1110.12, Christina Downey was good enough to point out that we have to add an S to guardians at the top of the second page, so that's one modification. So we'd like to make that. Otherwise, that was the big difference in that policy. And 2100, this is actually something that we had talked about at the prior board meeting, it just hadn't been added, because this is how it's done, is that the superintendent will be responsible for developing a district staffing plan, and she'll review it with the Board annually as part of the budget planning. It's obviously not done beforehand, it's part of it. 2131, there was a revision that we decided at the Policy Committee and Curriculum and Programming, that the superintendent will assist the Board by setting curriculum and program priorities, and will inform the Board of any substantial revisions to the curriculum. That is a change that I think is well worth noting. And then lastly, Karen Kowalski, I'm sorry, I need to get back to you, but she was pointing out that in 2131, in the last paragraph, we should also add guardians to this paragraph to be consistent with the prior policies. And I agree with that, so I'm happy to sort of make that modification as well.
Any further discussion? Karen, I don't know if you heard, Kathleen said she'd make her change.
Yeah, but though that was... I thought that we needed that consistency purposes, but since they're being addressed, and I have nothing further, thank you.
Any other discussion on these policies? All right, hearing then, all those in favor of adopting policies as presented on the cover sheet? Karen? All right, so those policies pass, 8-0. Thank you to PGC for continuing to move this process forward. I see the light at the end of the tunnel. All right, next up, the Financial and Staffing Report. Mr. O'Keefe, I'm sure there's not a lot of good news here.
No, not really. Yes, there is. I'll make it quick. As far as the general fund goes, as you know, a month ago, we were staring at a potential $1.2 million exposure. Since that time, and as reported in the forecast in this package, is some identified savings of $40,000 to $25,000. So our exposure is down to current .775. And since this was posted on Friday, we've also identified an additional savings that we're working. Plus, as you heard already mentioned this evening, we implemented yesterday a partial freeze on spending that will also help us to reduce the potential exposure further, hopefully down to zero. As far as capital goes, as you know, we've been closing out projects, we've closed out all of the old projects, 15, 16, 17, and have been reducing the 18, 19, 20 projects. Since we last reported this, our available balance has decreased an additional $900,000 to $25.4 million. And that was, as I said, posted last Friday, and I checked again today, and since, a week later, we're down another $700,000. So we're making a lot of headway on capital projects as well. If you look at the, if you look at what we've done, since, as I said, since January 31st, we're down $900,000, and then an additional $700,000 today. You look at what we've accomplished since December 4th, we've actually reduced our outstanding balance by $6.3 million. So a lot of, a lot of work there. Just last couple of items, food services continuing to forecasted budget. And we do have two transfers, one of which is announcement only, it's a $25,000 transfer within language arts for literate programming. The second one does require Board of Ed approval, and it is a number of items that contributed to the, to the action to reduce the potential exposure. It's a number of salary savings from attrition in frozen positions, and transferring that amount to outplace tuition in the amount of $276,226. So I'll need a motion on that.
All right, first one, we get a motion on the Financial and Staffing Report. Ms. Downey moves that. Is there a second? Mr. Kelly, thank you. Let's do our discussion on that first. So again, I commend you on continuing to win or down the capital. You guys have made amazing progress. I think Dan has gone home, please thank him again. All right, other questions on the Financial and Staffing Report? Yeah, we'll get to the transfers. All right, if there are no questions on the Financial and Staffing, there's a motion on the table to accept that. All those in favor? Karen?
Karen?
All right, that passes 8-0. Thank you. All right, can we get a motion on the transfers? And we're going to do our discussion. Moved by Ms. Downey, seconded by Mr. Bernstein. All right, discussion, Ms. Downey.
Sean, I applaud your efforts to try to find the money. My concern is kind of where we're taking these salaries out of. So I don't know if you could give us a little more detail without, you know, getting bogged down in it, but to find $276,000, what are we cutting?
We're talking about the HR Director job, or the Assistant HR Director job that was on hold, and we've now decided not to replace that position for this year and next year. And there's another...
Assistant... Charmaine's old job.
Charmaine's old job. There's also, there's also an assistant at Central Office, person who left, I believe, in December. Retired in December, and we're not replacing her. And then there was also in the business office, there was $22,000 planned for additional help, and we're not going to spend that money.
There's also stuff for school libraries. What were those reductions? There's like three of those, for part-time and regular salaries of...
Those are actually support positions in the library that are frozen right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? I'm always extremely uncomfortable when I start grading funds to make this Mr. Scher, did you want to add the master facility plan to the agenda?
Look, I'm going to say this, Peter. I don't want this to be a contest, okay? I want to add it if the board wants to talk about it. All I'm saying is, okay, we can only represent in the public what the board has taken action on. Anything else the board has taken action on, people cannot reference in the public as something that has been accepted and approved by the board. So to be candid, we keep referencing documents that the board's never taken up. If we have to take it up so people want to reference it and say it's valid, then put it on the agenda.
So, Peter, I...
And that's, and that's your job, running our agenda as a board chair.
That's funny, Peter. All right. I guess I'll add it because I don't want to have the full-scale discussion tonight, but I will say this. That is, that plan, you've had multiple opportunities to have a vote on the phone. We will add it as a discussion item. At the meeting, we add it. You have every ability to move that into action if you so choose. With that, I'll take a motion, Mr. Kelly.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Ms. Doe, all those in favor? Mr. Scher?
Hi.
We are unanimously adjourned.